All right, so, uh, good evening, everybody. It is five o'clock and I'd like to call to order the January 27th Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. The first thing is I am seeking a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th, 2019.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstention? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, public and student comment?
No one.
All right, there is nobody listed for comment, so we will move right on to Agenda Item Four, which is the Whole Child, Whole Wassa Short Cycle Report by Special Education Director Judy Lodall and Director of People's Services Angie Lloyd.
Thank you, Cassie, and thank you for having us present tonight. We are excited to be updating you on the Whole Child, Whole Wassa Wellness Strand Goal One. We have some really good things going on that we'll be talking about tonight. The Wellness Goal One is about supporting students through the development of a continuum of services and therefore reducing in-school and out-of-school suspensions by 3% per year. Wellness Goal One speaks to the development of a continuum of services, part of which is consistently teaching self-regulation strategies. Matt Ridicall is going to tell you about a relatively new program at John Muir that is part of this continuum of services being developed.
Good evening, board members. My name is Matt Ridicall and I'm one of the Associate Principals at John Muir Middle School. My primary responsibilities are in scheduling and programming. I'm very excited to share just one of the many great things that is happening at John Muir Middle School. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Hiltz, Judy Lodall, and Angie Lloyd for asking me to represent this initiative as well as report under the Wellness Strand of the strategic plan. During the summer of 2018, the John Muir leadership team met to discuss plans developed for the creation of a BRIDGE program. BRIDGE stands for breathe, reflect, internalize, de-escalate, grow, and exit. This concept was something I witnessed implemented in my time working at Horace Mann Middle School and thought it needed to be discussed with our leadership team at John Muir. The idea of the BRIDGE program is to give students a space to go if their immediate attitudes, behaviors, or beliefs are impeding their potential in the classroom or the school building. The intent is to process with students in the moment with the expectation that the student can return within that class period. During the summer of 2019, we were able to hire a BRIDGE coordinator. Mrs. Nancy Dewers, who is here tonight, was hired and she has proven to be a tremendous asset and a resource for our students and staff at John Muir Middle School. In addition to providing a consistent voice for students, Nancy has also been able to implement restorative practices during our lunch periods. What this means is that when conflicts arise, we have the availability through Mrs. Dewer to repair those relationships. We have been collecting data since the creation of the BRIDGE program and have seen many promising growth areas. With our initial BRIDGE data, we began reviewing Behavior Tracking Forms, or BTFs, for the 2017-18 school year and identified some areas of concern. The three-year BTF trend shows that we had an 8% drop in behavior referrals for the first year of implementation, and this year we are projecting to see a 19% reduction. In addition to BTF data, 2018 and 2019 saw a 38% drop in suspensions, and this year we are on pace to see a 61% reduction. In addition to BTF and suspension data, we began tracking the proportionality of BTFs for our age, gender, and racial groups found at John Muir. In general, we are seeing movement towards proportionality amongst these various groups. Lastly, you will see through the provided leaflet that Mrs. Dewer and I collected staff feedback this year through a survey. The majority of our staff, 63%, have had at least one student use the BRIDGE room in the first half of the 2019-2020 school year. 94% of our staff appreciates the processing power between the student, teacher, and Mrs. Dewer when the student returns to the classroom. Furthermore, our staff appreciates the consistency provided through Mrs. Dewer and the tremendous positive, non-punitive environment she has created in our BRIDGE program. A few staff members even attribute a calmer, less stressful working environment to the ability to have students process within the BRIDGE room. If you have any questions about the BRIDGE program or the data we've been collecting, I would enjoy time to speak with you. Again, I appreciate your time to speak to you tonight, and I thank the board, Dr. Hiltz, Mrs. Lodall, and Mrs. Lloyd for the availability to share just one of the positive initiatives at John Muir Middle School. Thank you for your time, and have a great night.
I'm gonna go over the current status. I went back for the past three years. That's kind of when we changed over from the SWISS system to the eduplimer system, so this data is most accurate. As you can see, this is broken down by elementary, and then the next two slides are middle school and high school. This is all 14 of our elementary schools. You can see from 2017 to 18, and then 18-19, and 19 to present. We picked out the behaviors that, you know, are the biggest and most disruptive in our school environment. So, physical aggression, the three Ds, defiance, disruption, and disrespect. We put those three together because when teachers report, they often report the same between the three. We can't really distinguish between the three. And then, of course, bullying on the bottom. So as you can see, in all three of those areas for elementary, were projected to be down numbers, which is a positive thing. I'll go on to middle school. Same thing, again. Looks like in physical aggression, if we continue the way we have been the first semester, we'll be down significantly. Defiance, disruption, and disrespect will be down quite a bit, and then bullying will be down as well for middle school. At the high school level, the one area that I kind of wanted to focus on was the 3D area. You can see that in 2017-18 to 18-19, we went up quite a bit. That was due to not reporting some things that are now being reported due to a change of administration, and it's just the way those two administrators did things. So there was nothing significant that was happening with behavior, it was simply reporting. And you can see that in physical aggression, we'll be down, and the 3Ds will probably be about the same as last year and same with bullying, right around the same numbers.
We also looked at suspension data district-wide, and district-wide, at this time in the year, we're down, we have a decrease of a little over 20%. We looked at data from the previous year, from the first day of school through December 7th, for the previous year, and we compared that to the current year from the first day of school through December 11th. So relatively the same timeframes, and we can see in-school suspensions are down, out-of-school suspensions are down significantly, and overall, our total in-and-out-of-school suspensions are down significantly this year as compared to last year. When we look at what barriers are being encountered, well, finding the right staff to work with students with significant mental and behavioral needs is a barrier, is always challenging, as we have talked about. Also, funding. Funding continues to be a concern, but we are continually looking for grant opportunities in every avenue. And time. Time is another barrier. Time to provide the needed staff trainings, provide staff with what they need. So finding the right people, funding, and time are barriers.
And then, next steps. I was looking forward to what we're doing next. Leader in Me is the, is the social-emotional learning curriculum that we've settled on after doing a vetting process last year. I've, I've talked to you a little bit about this before, and hoping in the near future I can do a more in-depth training with you on Leader in Me. It has some really good stuff to offer. This will be our universal curriculum for all students kindergarten through 12th grade. Our 4K will also be infusing it, but they use the CEFL model, which has been a really, really great thing for them, so they'll just infuse some of this into that. So you can see the seven habits. Those first three habits are teaching students to be independent. The habits four, five, and six are teaching students to be interdependent and working with others, and then habit seven, sharpening the saw, is teaching them to take care of themselves.
We are looking to expand the BRIDGE room concept, to move, to pilot it at the elementary level at Franklin Elementary School. We just completed our second round of interviews, and we are very happy that we think we found the right individual to staff that room. We're in the process of calling references. We've identified a spot or a location within Franklin Elementary School, and we hope to have it up and running as soon as possible. This program, the one in Franklin, the BRIDGE room, will certainly follow the procedures and practices that John Muir has in place. Do you have any questions for us?
I just have a comment. I'm really impressed by that BRIDGE program because it does a couple of things. One thing is it provides a student who's having trouble maybe in one class, and then another one, and then another one, the same consistent person to deal with that, so they know the big picture. And also lets the teacher keep on teaching so that that child can get what they need, but the whole class doesn't have to stop. So, it sounds like a fantastic program that's working well, and I can see where it'd be highly effective at the elementary because there are those same type of issues with younger and younger students.
And I'd like to address, I mean, I'd like to see the bullying numbers that are reflected there, but I'm gonna be Debbie Downer. Some of the numbers, they get lower as we go through middle school and high school, partly because the kids mature. But the other reason is that the kids get more sophisticated in how they do their bullying, and they're less likely to get caught, and the kids that are being bullied start to give up. They think, real or not, that nobody cares, and they just stop reporting. So that's some of the numbers, and I went to a bullying session at the convention. Angie was there, and so was Lee, and some of the things they suggested were quarterly asking all kids, "Are you being bullied? Where are you being bullied?" And then, the kids that are being bullied, we find them a staff member that checks in with them once a week, you know, "How are things going? You know, are you having any problems?" And they find that that really helps.
That was the most impressive part of that whole presentation, was that checking in, that quarterly check-in. My question is, are there plans to do a pilot of some sort in one of the high schools?
Well, we will expand it as, you know, funding and individuals and time allows. Right now, at this moment, we're looking at moving it into the elementary school and collecting that data, and then expanding is appropriate.
Thank you.
And then, one more comment. I know that the data's really important, it's going in the right direction, but you know as well as I do that when you have those very high-needs kids, one child can really affect the data in how many majors or minors or whatevers. So when that child moves on to a different building, the data changes a lot, so, I mean, they're, I take the numbers with a grain of salt, kind of, because they're so individual to the kids that you're working with at the time.
Those points notwithstanding, I'd say this is definitely an improvement, and it does show that you've done a lot of very serious work here. So I wanted to undercut it at all. Within the same age groups, we're seeing great improvement. That was something I was looking for, too, is, well, did those fifth graders age out? And is that the reason we see a bump, or are eighth graders going to ninth grade? But, you know, if we're changing, in that one case, how we're collecting the data, well, of course, it's going to be different. But then, at that point, again, notwithstanding, it's still a big drop. So this is, this is really some, some impressive results already.
I would, I would concur with what Jean and Lee had stated about the fact of the check and connect within the schools. That's one of the biggest things, that whenever a child is connecting with a teacher, no matter who that is, in a positive way, it just keeps on helping to take those numbers down, and people will see those numbers even come faster down with that connect, and they know that they have somebody they can turn to. So, go ahead.
Is there any plan to survey the staff, to ask them whether they believe behavior has improved? So, I mean, the goal is improve behavior, not reduce suspensions, that's just a way to measure it, but...
Yep. On your leaflet, you'll notice that there's just a few notes from staff, but this year and last year, Nancy and I collected some staff survey data, and, and just what you're seeing here is just some of the basic things that the staff has reported back to us. So, just this year, the 63%, but then also, the, those positives under, under Point C, those are all feedback from the staff members. The, the staff appreciates the, the positive environment that has been created in the, in the BRIDGE room. Also, the non-punitive nature is something that they really appreciate, and they see in the kids their willingness to go to that processing center and, and to be able to talk with another person. The consistency that Mrs. Dewer has in being that central person is another big positive because then we're cutting down on, on students quote-unquote gaming the system and going just to get out of class, where Mrs. Dewer starts to know who the regular customers are, or she starts to understand when they come and, and how they're, and how they're able to, to process with her, or if she's processed with them earlier in the day and they keep popping up throughout the day. And then also just the, I don't wanna say relief, but just the, the reassurance that she's there, that there is someone that they can go and talk to in the moment, provides a reassurance to the staff.
Yeah, I think the, you know, staff survey results are, it's difficult because you don't get hard numbers, like you do with number of suspensions, number of BTFs, but, you know, I have concerns about the suspension numbers and the BTF reports being used to measure it as well, because, I mean, in a really bad situation with lots of horrible, bad behavior, you might have the same number of reports as you do in a school with not as many problems, it's just because the perspective is so much different. And you could have a situation where you have less suspensions, or maybe you actually need more suspensions. So I'm really interested in hearing whether the staff actually sees a difference in the behavior, more than just the number of reports.
And part of the Leader in Me program that we'll be implementing next year, there's an MRA, or Measure of All Results Assessment, every spring, so we'll be doing our first one this spring, and it, we will assess the students, the staff, and the parents, and it really is about what, finding out what the climate, culture of the building is. So then, every year, we'll be monitoring that.
So, Angie, we don't have a breakdown of the schools or separation of the middle schools or high schools, and you may have said this, and I might have just missed it, but is the reason that Franklin is the, the next location because it just had a higher number compared to the other elementary schools?
They're a larger elementary school, so they have a larger overall population, and they have a larger special need population, just by virtue of being larger, more numbers. And we took a look at many different factors and determined that that would be the, the most logical place or the next place that we would like to try to implement this program. And we saw the need.
It's also interesting that the kids from Franklin will be feeding into the similar program when they get to middle school. Will they not?
Well, Horace Mann has something very similar.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you for your impressive work on that, and we will move on then to the next item on the agenda. Agenda Item Five. We have a couple subsections within this agenda item.
Good evening, everyone. While Mr. Test sets up, I just wanna kind of tie all this together for you. So first of all, you heard that there is a lot of work going on in the area of trying to support improved student behavior, and we're getting some very, very good results, and that's something that we want to have in every building. And so, the, as you know, the, the topic of, of student behavior is one of our main focuses, so much so that when Mr. Test and Mr. Styler brought together this team around optimization of resources, it really turned into a conversation about student behavior. That team said, yes, we want to optimize our resources, but when we do that, we really want to channel it toward improved student behavior, staff support. And so, we were surprised, but certainly welcomed with that feedback. And so, tonight, well, I should back up half a step. This fall, we came to and said, in support of that goal, you granted us the opportunity to hire Nexus Solutions, who knows our buildings and helped us, to help us identify some potential efficiencies in support of this goal. So I'm very pleased to let you know that tonight, you're going to hear the results of some of their work. You saw some of the surveys. We posted them on, on Board Book, and we've got a couple of guests with us tonight that I'll allow Bob to introduce, but you're going to hear some very favorable information. You're gonna get an insight from staff and the community, and when all that's done, when you feel like you've got your heads wrapped around that, we will follow up then and get some direction from you on some next steps. So, with that, Mr. Test.
All right. Under Section Five on your agenda, we've got three means by which we gathered opinion from throughout the district. I'm gonna take the first one on the ideation sessions that we held, were held, and we listened to 150 community members, and then we spent two more sessions listening to about 50 students, and I've got some of that data to share with you. Following that, we'll have another presentation on a staff survey insights. Nexus performed with Steve Shonert's open this year tonight. Staff survey, at least every building occupant in the district was offered the opportunity to submit their opinion on all kinds of different things, from comfort levels and ability to educate and curb appeal, and all, all kinds of interesting things. And then, probably the most scientific of the three, we've invited Peter Leatherman, who's sitting to my right, from Morris Leatherman, and they conducted a phone survey, and that's probably the most scientific data you're gonna see tonight. So we'll put it all together, and we'll have a little discussion on next steps following a look at some of this data. So the ideation sessions, we held eight of these, I believe, with the full community, and two more with the students, and the eight community sessions were attended by 150 community members. 23% were district employees, and that's important for a couple of reasons. You might think that's not a very representative sample, and maybe it isn't, but at the same time, there's some great ideas that come from their employees, and who might know education and what is great about what we're doing and what is needed for what we should be doing than our employees. Needs to be mentioned that that was probably pretty heavy with employee representation. Some people were selected, but we also did put out an open invite to the community. And who responds to an open invite for education ideation sessions? Perhaps people that are more closely connected to education. So, it's good, but also at the same time, we have to at least disclose that. What we did during these ideation sessions, we asked seven provocative questions to the group, and we gathered opinion, and we placed dots based on the affinity process, and it was very hard to quantify this data, bring it to you in a nice, concise manner. Hopefully, you got a chance to look at what's already in Board Book, because we don't have the time to really look at each one of these slides individually, but each question comes with a bar graph, and when categorizing all the different comments, what's great in the Wassa School District, curriculum and programming rose to the top. And we heard over and over again, the number of programs, the vast curriculum, all the different offerings we have, and a lot of the things that people are attracted to a larger school district for. That's a strength of the district. And right behind that, and this came up over and over and over again, the teachers are a strength of the district. Teachers, it became very, very obvious, and many of the questions that we asked are a strength of the district. And when we talk teachers, we can't not say staff in general. Staff and teachers together overwhelm curriculum and programming, if you look at it that way. Community partnerships and involvement, enough people felt that we had strong community connections in the Wassa School District, so that was mentioned on many, many post-its as well. And I was gonna take this down as far as I had to before we hit administration, so that's one of the questions. So, anything to add on this one, Dr. Hiltz?
No, just be aware that there were other items that were also noted as, as great things happening. We just chose the top five in each of these to give you a flavor for the themes that we saw.
So for the top vote getter, curriculum and programming, here's a word cloud, and I, I can't read this without giving preference to some of them that I feel strongly about. So, I can't not say opportunities, I can't not say programs and technology, but there are a few others that you can read for yourself, and it is in Board Book, and you can go back and look at some of this. Dr. Hiltz and I were at every single ideation session, so we listened to every single comment. We engaged in discussion. We tried not to lead the group. We really tried hard not to lead the group, so we were more of a research, resource, but we certainly were listening. And what we heard during all these ideation sessions is becoming, becoming a part of what we're thinking about the district and where we're going with the district. So, teachers and staff, teachers came up over and over and over again, aside from staff, that's obvious, and beyond that, a lot of adjectives that describe our teachers and our staff. Community partnerships, we work with businesses, we work with other nonprofits, we work with all kinds of different entities in the city and habitat. Second provocative question, if you ask what the great things are, what are the challenges? So, believe it or not, we do have a few challenges, and staff morale and retention rose to the top. Now, keep in mind, 23% employees are, are attending the ideation sessions. Now, they have a special insight that maybe somebody from the community might not have. So that's important to understand. They've got a special insight, and it's a perception is everything, and if there's a perceived morale issue, it's true, there is a morale issue. Behavioral and mental health concerns came up a lot, not only in this question, but over and over and over again. Some of our behavioral challenges in the classroom were mentioned over and over again. You'll see that in some of the other responses as well. Social challenges can probably be grouped right in there, and that also came up with what has changed in the last several years in education in general. That's getting to be more and more of a challenge every day, and it's not just the Wassa School District. Curriculum and programming, that was a strength, a top strength. It's also identified as a challenge by some. Boundaries and enrollment trends, you can't deny that. Demographics change. Neighborhoods evolve, and our schools usually aren't as quickly evolving, and boundaries are almost necessary as neighborhoods change and population bases change and size of your school district changes. It's recognized that that is an issue, a challenge. Staff morale and retention, I think some of these might be in the Wassa, but many of them are in the industry, just in education. And maybe some of them are just education in Wisconsin, some of them might be specific to the Wassa School District, but we know the climate nationwide and how education has been treated in the last 10 years, and it comes with an impact. Morale, retention, burnout, retaining good teachers. Acknowledged in previous slides, we have good teachers. Now, acknowledged here, we want to keep them. Behavior and mental health concerns is certainly a challenge, and you probably could have named many of the words that rose to the top of the word cloud. We've had those discussions in this room, so I don't think that comes as a big surprise. Second biggest challenge. Social challenges wrapped right in there. Could have put them together and they would have together rose to the top. Population shifting, declining enrollment, there is a river. The river was talked about a lot, and west and east, and, you know, the business growth in the city and where it is and where the population is growing isn't necessarily where we have our schools. How has education changed over the last 20 years? No surprise there, technology. Societal issues, once again, and behavior and mental issues could be wrapped together, perhaps. Testing, becoming more and more prevalent and driving more and more of what we do. Parental involvement. In most cases, the parental involvement change was less parental involvement, the comments at least were in that direction. The comments at least were in that direction in that vein. Social media. Social media and social media over and over again. Dealing with that challenge in my own family right now, my own kids. Societal challenges, families look different today than they did 20 years ago in a lot of different ways. The role of the parent has changed, certainly perceived role of the parent has changed. Mental health needs, you read it almost like a sentence, mental health needs over and Testing, particular standardized testing and standards. Where less does appear, and as I mentioned earlier, that does come up over and over again, less parental involvement, more different parental involvement. What would you like newspaper headlines to say about the Wausau School District in 10 years? Kind of nice to know that overwhelmingly, we wanted to be known for high academic achievement. Twenty-three point eight percent of the comments. Career ready, it's nice to know that our group confirmed what we feel is pretty important, great career and life-ready students. Great place to work with excellent staff. Getting back to staff and teachers, our strength. Burnout and retention is an issue, and we want to be known in 10 years that we're a great place to work with excellent staff. Innovative program, equitable student success. And you're going to be hearing a lot about equity in the next several weeks. High academic achievement, no surprise with the words that rose to the top. Career-ready, community-minded graduates. If you won the lottery, you had to spend it on your school district, what would you spend it on? Increased staff and compensation, so more staff and more compensation for the staff area here. Facility upgrades, nondescript, but a lot of them, up here it's nondescript, but a lot of the post-it notes were. New athletic facilities, add-on for educational adequacy at your secondaries, tech ed, school forest, things like that. Facility upgrades, if you put them all in a group, almost 19%. Curriculum and programming support, a little bit lower than that. Student family assistance, 965. And mental health support, that is a low percentage, but we feel obligated to put that one on here. That was a common theme.
Don't you think that might be part of the first one?
Definitely could, yeah.
That's where I'd put it.
Teachers, teacher, benefits, staff, students, support, school. New facilities, better space, Montessori is pretty large, elementary equipment. Montessori again, programming, school, education, students, books. Food, materials, scholarships, healthy, and well. Biggest facility needs, specific to that last question, more specific utilization and boundaries. A lot of comments, weren't facilities necessarily, but aligning your facilities with your boundaries and your number of students to do a better job of making sure you use your resources. This is optimization of resources strand, so people in the room are thinking along those lines, to no surprise. Using your buildings optimally, building and infrastructure separately, so building and infrastructure, parking lots, student drop-off, pickup, some other infrastructure topics, athletics perhaps, school forest.
Cafeteria, gym.
Cafeteria and gym separating, say one of each instead of one that doubles in use. Educational adequacy, we're going to spend a lot more time talking about tonight when we get into more detail on the staff survey or the building occupant survey and exactly what educational adequacy means. Steve Shonert will run into more detail there. Safety, we also found out in that same survey and Mr. Leatherman's survey that we do a pretty good job with safety in the district, and that came out over and over again. But there could be some facility improvements for safety and community engagement. Overcrowding at some, not necessarily at others. Underuse, overuse, balancing. Infrastructure at some schools more than others. West is a big school, got a lot of votes, right? It's right in the middle. But you'll see a lot of that in the next survey as well, building occupant survey and how West scored, along with all the other ones. Educational adequacy. Essentially, are our buildings equipped for the 21st century? A few safety and security issues in isolated pockets in the district. Listen, ask the community, this comes up in the very next one, too. What advice would you give the decision-makers? Decision-makers, we're decision-makers, and a lot of decision-makers engage and enable staff. Didn't necessarily say that we weren't engaging and enabling staff, but you could at least come to that conclusion, right? Engage and enable staff more, be student-focused, again, probably more than we are. Engage community and parents to a better degree, think innovatively and strategically. East-West River, school boundaries, building unique side schools. So before we bring up the next set of data, I'll do the staff.
May I ask a question on one of these? I'm sorry, and I don't know, there might be other questions as well. My question is specific to Slide 10.
Slide 10.
So I've been reading all of these words, and one on this particular slide really jumped out at me. So I'm just trying to get a little bit of understanding of how this came up, because we see opioids. And generally, as a society, we have an opioid crisis. But at least in my time on the board, we haven't had a real meaningful discussion or awareness of opioids with our students. And this is concerning to me because all it takes is one time for somebody to overdose, and they're gone. So how did this come up to the best of your recollection? Is this just a vague addressing a problem in society, or is it very specific to this school district?
Remind me, Trish, what was the question associated with that?
It's social challenges.
Biggest challenge, did you say?
Yeah, and it's certainly not the biggest by any means, but it's on here, and that's alarming.
I've heard it myself from staff members, not about students having trouble with opioids, but their families having trouble with opioids, how that impacts the students.
Yeah.
And their life support.
Yeah, it was definitely not a theme that came up, but I'm going to look over to Angie and see if you've heard anything. What's been your experience with it?
Yeah, I would agree with Lance, that's what we hear about it the most, is opioids within the family. When I do handles with care, every, you know, every Monday morning, I get a lot of handle of care from the police department and the sheriff's office, and a lot revolves around families having arrests and that type of thing due to opioid addiction issues.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
And then I wanted to talk about the testing. The last session I was in, we talked quite lengthy about the standardized testing. And I don't know if things have changed, but no one in the room seemed to think it has. That standardized testing has always been geared to white, male, upper, or maybe middle class, and that can account for problems when you have a high minority population. Does anybody know if these tests have been reconfigured or if we're still in that model so that schools with high minority populations are still getting?
I've not heard of they've been changed. You know, that certainly was, that certainly has been reported. I don't know if anybody else has heard, you know, looking at Angie a little bit, if she could, very, very involved, or others. Yeah, I don't think they've been recalibrated, if you will. Frankly, when we get together on the 10th, that might be a good question for our workshop.
Might be in the resolution for next year.
Yeah, I've heard of that they're quite problematic with students of poverty as well. You know, you may have a question that asks you to explain something about a vacation.
Right.
Well, one of my kids who's been on 20 vacations is at a big advantage to a student who's never been on a vacation, who might be just as intelligent.
Right.
Which hasn't had that experience.
Right.
And it's just, you know, just one small example.
Yeah, that's a really good example, bias though.
That was in the first session that I went to about career readiness, there was just no question that people were just saying that testing, testing, testing is not a help in getting these kids ready to be moving forward.
It's a political move, that sounds good.
Well, I would say, though, there have to be some benchmark assessment. You know, we don't want people to fall behind without us knowing, right, and being able to have a chance to intervene. So, yeah, where is that balance between what's helpful and informative versus what's not, you know, what's overdone? So, constant conversation.
Also, you've got a comment.
Yes.
With regards to the testing comment, we had students in virtually every session, but then we also had the two specific student sessions. It wasn't just the testing going on at school, it's AP testing, it's ACT testing, it's all the pressure on the students of all these different kinds of tests that they're having to take. That was the generalization of the testing comment that came back.
Thank you for sharing.
Does that make sense?
So if there are any other questions, this is, that was really a qualitative look at staff and communities, you know, perceptions of what's going well, where the challenges are, where would they like to go? So now, I think we're going to...
Steve's survey.
The staff survey, correct? Right. So, welcome back, Steve Shonert. You've seen Steve before from NEXUS Solutions, and...
Am I going here? Where am I going?
Would you like to stand up? Would you like to sit? What would you?
Doesn't, actually, I sit.
All right.
Okay. You're good there. Unless you just want to be here.
When the board starts throwing things, they don't want to be in there.
I forgot.
Sure. Sure. Everybody, I'm like... Yeah, I know that. Okay. Couple of comments first, is that the staff survey is intended to help us as we go through our process, evaluate a couple of different areas. One is the building itself, the comfort, how the current teaching environment. So we have, I think it was 40-some questions that we asked the participants to take and answer. The first part of it was, again, about the building, the current building status and the comfort level of that. And the second part is on educational adequacy. And Bob mentioned before, educational adequacy, how does the building today deliver the education that you're trying to deliver? Okay? And where you might be doing well in certain areas and where the shortcomings may be. So, we use this, again, to give the participants a, try to get a baseline from them as to where they think, from their perspective, the buildings are today. Okay? Then we use that information to dig deeper into the individual schools as we evaluate the physical space and the educational adequacy component. As this process continues, they will have more opportunities to participate even deeper into the process. And finally, at the end of the survey, we left, ask an open-ended question, allow them to talk, tell us what might be on their mind. So at the end, you'll see a, we tried to capture one comment from each of the schools that we came across. So, the educational adequacy here, there were 20 questions here with regards to the, how the curriculum is delivered in the space. We've got a heat map here. The thing that, not going to get into details on this, but suffice to say that the redder, the deeper red, the number, the worse overall the ranking was. Deeper on the green, the better it was for that particular school across the board. Those are just averages as we go through them. We'll bring this up at the end, so you can see some of the questions that we asked. We are not going through all 40 of the questions, we picked a few highlights to be able to go over tonight. Okay? If you have any questions while we're doing this, please stop, and I'll be happy to answer at that time. So, the, all the questions had something like this, a rating. We had somewhat satisfied, very satisfied, some, a neutral in the middle, and then somewhat dissatisfied, very dissatisfied. You can see the responses. Bob mentioned we opened it up to everybody. We had 300 and I believe 40 responses total that came back to us. And you can see the responses by school. Obviously, you can see the bigger schools that are there. This is an example of all the data that came through, and we've got one of these charts basically for every question that was asked. Okay? So, a synopsis of what is the information tell us here? You know, the facilities had indoor air quality scores less than 50% for those schools. Why is that important? Because typically, when you have indoor air quality issues, you have issues that may affect attendance, students and staff being sick, not feeling well in the afternoon, they could be hot, kids aren't paying attention. So indoor air quality in a school is important. More than 33% of the respondents were dissatisfied with their personal workspace in the facility. So their own little personal workspace, not necessarily the classroom in and of itself. Okay? 68% of the teachers consider faculty planning and team teaching very or extremely important. Yet, most of your older schools do not have adequate space to be able to do that. 95% of the respondents considered natural daylight important and beneficial to students. 65% of them are satisfied, that means the remaining 35% are not happy with the amount of daylight in their particular school. 30%, over 30% of the respondents were dissatisfied with the quality of the light. There was a comment, I think you'll see later, from somebody that mentioned, they're referring probably to the color of light, what they call the Kelvin. It's been found that students with special needs respond better to certain colored light than other colored light. So that's probably what they were referencing on that particular one. More than 50% of the respondents are dissatisfied with their teaching space in those two schools, Hewitt, Texas, and Montessori Charter. More than 67% of respondents used portable fans for thermal comfort in the following facilities. Typically using the fans because you're warm, okay? You're trying to get, and there's probably a lack of air movement in that particular school. More than 41% of respondents used portable heaters in this building here. They're cold, okay? More than 33% of the respondents are dissatisfied with the outdoor green space for non-extracurricular for teaching at these facilities. Don't have the ability to go outside and maybe hold a class outside when the weather's nice. More than 50% of the respondents at these facilities report that thermal comfort and air quality negatively affects productivity. Again, kids falling asleep, maybe not responding well in the afternoon, it's warm, it's stuffy, it's cold. Many different items. Many different items can pop up for that. But they're saying it impacts the productivity, probably not only for the student, but also for the instructors themselves. Within the educational adequacy section, the three highest overall scores, and Bob mentioned this, uh, across the district, were that the, they feel that, uh, the district provides a safe and secure environment for students and staff, which is a good, which is good, obviously. They also feel, feel that the building is welcoming, both externally and internally when people walk into the building. Um, also, the three lowest overall scores in the district were, uh, questions, how comfortable and flexible is the furniture in your classroom and school? Most of them are, and we find this across the, the state. I mean, districts, uh, because of budget cuts, they just don't allocate a lot of money to new furniture. Got school buildings with old, uh, furniture that doesn't necessarily, uh, create the environment you want to be able to teach in today's environment. Uh, do you feel your building contains sufficient spaces for hands-on exploratory learning? That hand, the hands-on, the STEM maker space, dirty labs, uh, clean labs, um, again, when those buildings were built, majority, they weren't, uh, weren't teaching the way we're teaching today. And do you feel the building contains enough large group instruction spaces? Some elementary schools, the largest group instruction space they have is the combined gym and cafeteria. So it's not conducive and nor are there time allotted to be able to have, uh, you know, a meeting or a class where you've got all the sections at, at one time. More than 25% of respondents are cold in the winter at the following schools. More than 25% of the respondents are hot in the spring and the fall. Okay, just regulation of temperature across the district. Okay? And then, do any of the areas of your building seem undersized or overcrowded? You'll see, you can see, I want to point out, you can see where there's a heavy, heavy dose John near Middle School, which we got in this, in the survey, it'll be overcrowded. We also have it at West High School. But yet, conversely, at East High School, look at the, the ratings there, six yes and 25 no. So they're under capacity. And how do we potentially address that going forward? Okay? Again, the heat map, uh, that we just, uh, discussed, again, red, bad, uh, green, good. Some of the sample comments, um, you know, from Franklin, I'm not going to go through every one of them. You've seen them in your board book. Um, but again, a lot of this gets back to comfort in the classroom and humidity, heat, those schools that are under condition, so on and so forth. So, uh, we got one with Playground at G D Jones. Separate lunchroom, this is one that I particularly wanted to bring up because we, we see that across the state and your, your buildings were no, no different. Those with the combined gym and cafeteria creates problematic issues from the standpoint that we have to block out a good portion of the, the day for lunches. And then you have to work your physical education classes around to meet the mandate from the state. And what's left over are the classes where math and reading and writing are taught. And we know there are specific times that are better to teach that. Right now, you sort of have, and you're no different than virtually every other district we deal with, that the tail's wagging the dog here. So you schedule other classes around those particular activities. Montessori kept coming up about needing its own, own space. Um, another one that's, that's kind of pickup and drop-off areas are becoming unsafe. Um, so site plan work, some of the schools, you have the ability to maybe adjust some site plans. Other places, you're, you're just landlocked and you can't, can't do anything about it. Okay? There's that comment, second one from the bottom of, different light bulbs used throughout the building and the classrooms. Um, again, different colored light can create different issues for different students. And then there were no comments that came through for Lincoln and Statine. Bus loading area, Callan. And then the comment from the last 50 years old looks at interior refresh. It's amazing how to refresh to a school can do, um, appearance and overall productivity when you refresh a, a school. That, and well, I went through that quickly, um, but again, your staff will have additional opportunities, um, to participate as we move forward in this process. And with that, I'd have to take any big questions you might have. Okay. Thank you. Uh, I can't.
Here, maybe you can sit next to Steve. If it's fun, you can stand.
If people don't mind me standing here for three hours in the truck, I wouldn't mind standing.
Yep.
Steve, I just wanted to make a comment as I was thinking here and looking at the schools that have, you know, space problems and things of that fashion, like you were pointing out, a lot of the schools are the older buildings that have been with us for many years and teaching is different today than what it was 20, 30 years ago, 75 years ago when they were first built.
Right.
You know, the buildings are a lot different. It's, it's interesting that those were the, the negatives. And, uh, some of our newer buildings, we've got great buildings, we've got tremendous buildings. And we should be very proud of them, but we need to look at what we can do.
Some of the issues that we really see, again, not just here, but across the state is special education, for instance. They, I have a severely handicapped daughter and where I live, she went to one elementary school, all the kids did that were like her. Then they went to one middle school and then you went to one high school. Now we're starting to mainstream, right? But the facilities were never created to have special education rooms. They sort of get what's left over if there is room in a building. So, that's a perfect example. Bathrooms, for instance, in older buildings, they're not, they don't have wide enough doors. You can't get around. How does a child in a wheelchair maneuver? So those are all things that are, that are popping up that we're dealing with and districts are having to deal with. It's also a drain on resources, right? As you mainstream and you get, spread it out, now you have part-time over here, you have part-time over here, this teacher or aide is moving back and forth between schools. So those are the type of things that we're, we look to address in educational adequacy where we can. But yeah, the older buildings are, are very problematic. There's, there's no question about it. Some it gets to the point where you just say, mm.
It'll be interesting to hearing what your thoughts and proposals are after going through this whole survey and getting the staff, their input, because that's the very important part too.
Right.
They're working with the students in some of those deficient buildings. So, anyway.
We haven't, we haven't seen these figures in a long time, but particularly for the newer members, those are the same buildings that are the most expensive to keep up. Without question.
Much, you know, many times more expensive than the newer ones.
And they weren't built for efficiency. They're built for small, 200 students, 250 students, right? Now you don't build a elementary school unless it's, if it's anything less than three, maybe four sections. So it's 400, 500 students. So it allows you to, uh, utilize the resources and have full-time equivalents at a school so you're not back, bouncing back and forth between smaller schools.
Back to the model school.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment about furniture. That's a hard thing to spend money on as a school district. But my experience in watching people change over furniture and trying to get the best deal, the cheapest thing, is that you kind of get what you pay for and you have to buy good quality. And it helps to work with a company that knows how to design the total space instead of trying to piecemeal it and do, okay, this year we're going to buy a few tables, this year we're going to buy a few chairs. I had the opportunity in my library in another district to work with a company that did that and it changed the whole way the space was used. Things were mobile, people could move things around quickly, and kids used the space so differently. And it brought down their stress level to have a lot more soft seating to use. And it held up. So, um, I think it's a good investment to not try and do that on the cheap, but just say, okay, we're going to do as much as we can and we're going to do it right.
Something I want to see more of, as we go forward, is the connection between that space utilization and furniture. How much of the space utilization problem you can solve just by reconfiguring the furniture?
Take it away.
Take it away.
All right. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening to review the community survey we undertook for the district. Uh, just to review the methodology with folks. We talked with 400 randomly selected residents across the district. The interviews were conducted last fall. It's on October 14th and the 30th. The average interview time was 16 minutes. Uh, we did have 8% of the samples stay on the phone with us for over 45 minutes of their own volition. Uh, my phoneers call them the district historians. Um, and there's never just one answer. Non-response rate, uh, once we convinced that we weren't selling anything and we weren't voter IDing them for any purpose, uh, was very low, 4%. The 400 sample, this is the scientific statistically, uh, projectability, to within plus or minus 5% in 95 out of 100 cases. In statistics, it doesn't matter the percent of the population to get the five, it's the 400 sample. So 400 sample across the state of Minnesota, or I'm sorry, Wisconsin, or Wausau School District is plus or minus 5% regardless. Everybody wants to know about cell phones. We've included cell phones in our sampling since 2007. Um, in the district, 36% indicated they were a cellphone-only household. 15% have landline only, that exists, they're still out there. Uh, both of these groups have very specific demographics and then 49% had both landline and cellphone. In looking at the demographics a little bit further to show you the snapshot we got of the district. Did I come to you? I just have it in my pocket. Did it fall asleep?
You can do this.
Oh, there it is. Some of the demographics, the first set of bars on the chart is how long has the residents lived in the school district? 38% have been here for 10 years or less, the newbies in the district. 21% are settlers, one in five. Average longevity in the district comes in just at about 16 and a half years on average. What about the presence of children? 17% have preschoolers in their household, 28% have children attending the Wausau School District, and 66% are empty nesters. Now, empty nesters does not mean to apply an age, it just means to simply say there's no child in the household. So it could be a millennial that hasn't started a family yet. Renters, a quarter of the population, the self-assessed home value, this is always tends to be a little bit overinflated, uh, based on optimism, comes in about 145,000. Political ID, Republicans, 5% more than Democrats, with 22% indicating that they were independents. Continuing with the demographics, uh, the age of the respondent, the largest group is the millennial group in the district. You are a young school district. Now, as a total with 27% being between the ages of 18 and 34, 35% over the age of 55. The median comes in, uh, for the age of the respondent at about 46 years old. Some college experience is the median education level in the district. 28% were high school graduates or less, well, 40% were college graduates or post, or had postgraduate experience. You are a bit more financially stressed than what we're seeing across the Upper Midwest over the past six months. Uh, the financially stressed at 38%, financially comfortable at 61%. The norm on the financially stressed, and now this doesn't include what happened on the stock market today, this one up, this one goes up and down, is right about 30% on this, on this. So it's something to monitor when you're considering a tax increase. This can obviously change, uh, I'm sure it changed today and it'll change over time. Uh, but this is something that we monitored about 15 years ago, we as a company used to ask income. And we realized that income does not necessarily correlate to financial stability to pay for a school district referendum request. And so we started asking these, uh, four, uh, four statements. And it's basically asking about income and expenses and how it matches up to determine whether the household is financially stressed or financially comfortable. 48% men, 52% women. That's intentional. We always try to balance it, but we have to do, that's the one screening thing that we have to do always at the outset, is to ask for the person whose birthday is closer to the date we're calling, or we'll have 70% women because men don't answer the phone. And then, the river, I chuckled, we just split and did 50% on the east side of the river, 50% on the west side. So normally at this point, before I go into the survey, any questions on methodology or demographics or anything? All right. Survey says, we always start broad and then go down into specifics. First question we ask, how would you rate the quality of the public schools in the district? 93% rate them excellent or good, 6% say only fair or poor. Now, the norm for the Upper Midwest, uh, the excellent, good, the favorable rating is between 85 and 90%. Overall, people feel good about their schools. What differentiates districts though, is the excellent rating. Because Midwesterners are very difficult to get to be enthusiastic about anything. Oftentimes, good is good enough. And if we go and ask good, how do you become excellent? I guarantee you 20% of them will say, don't bother, you're good, you don't need to be excellent. The norm excellent rating right now is about 21%. Okay? So you have almost twice the amount of enthusiasm for the quality of education in the schools, outstanding rating. Now, two open-ended questions. What do they like most about the district? They can tell us anything, we code their number one answer, collapse them into categories. What leads the list on its own is good teachers at 20%. But if you combine college prep classes and the variety of programming, you have 26% in that category of curriculum programming is what they're looking at for what they like most. And then, for the academic quality, what's happening in the classroom specifically? High achievement stats at 13%, good academics at 4%. So that's 17%. You have a hierarchy here. Uh, districts are all over the place. Some are very focused on teachers, some are very focused on curriculum and programming, some just want to know what's happening, the academics in the seats. Your folks, there is a tier here, it's programs and curriculum, it's staff, and then it's the overall academic quality. But then also, we have a whole bunch of other things at the 2% level I put up there and just to show you what other people are saying. Nice facilities, community involvement, good communication. Now, if we ask what they like most, we typically follow up with what's the most serious issue facing the school district? The good news is, you don't have any major concerns. Okay? The threshold we use on this is if you have something hit 20% or one out of five residents coalesces around one response, that's a significant finding. Okay? You don't have anything that hits double digits. Okay? It's all single digits, leading at poor spending. And that's a pretty much universal constant for school districts, between 8 and 12% point to poor spending. Aging facilities, high taxes is about a quarter of what we typically see. That norm is about 14%. We'll talk more specifically about taxes later on. We have large class sizes, declining quality, uh, lack of programs, but really nothing, these are all what we call classifieds pre-issues. Things that need to be fixed on the ban, on the equalizer ban in order to make everything perfect, but there's nothing creating dissonance in the community whatsoever. The actual most impressive finding on here is the 26% that say nothing. There are no problems in the school district whatsoever, this is utopia. We call these folks boosters because they are positive throughout. They rate the quality of education excellent, they rate the board positively, they're getting great info, uh, they have great feelings towards the finances, communication, they're supportive of referendums. I'm sorry, that's...
Yeah.
So, the norm, nothing, is about 8%. You have three times more the base of community boosters that we typically see, outstanding rating. Now, how does the district do in meeting the learning needs of all students, most students, only some or very few? Among the top three over the last 18 months of those saying you're meeting the learning needs of all students... Among the top three over the last 18 months of those saying you're meeting the learning needs of all students, it's a stringent standard with 2/3. Now, those that say most, only some or very few, the 30%, are followed up with the question of which students' needs are not being met. And that's what's a rate here. So this 17% is 17% of 30%. But you can see the theme of the type of students. If they have concern on their learning needs not being met, it's struggling, it's average, it's underachievers. And this really mirrors what we've, I've been doing this 25 years. Back in the 90s, everybody was saying there's not enough for gifted and talented. In the first part of the century, it was all focused, you're not doing enough for average because you're doing too much for gifted and talented, too much for struggling. Now, we've come to it's the average and the low average that everybody's concerned about. But the key takeaway here though is 2/3 of the district say you're meeting the learning needs of all students. How does the quality compare to five years ago? Is it better, worse, or about the same? 40% say it's about the same. 48% say it's better. And 3% said it's worse. This one, we always look at a ratio. It's a 16 to 1 ratio, better to worse. That's the second highest ratio we've had in the last five years. I don't know what's changed over five years. The norm on this right now is 3 to 1, better to worse. And there are districts where I go and present and then leave quickly where they have more people saying it's worse now than it was five years ago. It's an incredible endorsement. Whatever's changed over five years, the community's aware of it. Now, some specific school district perceptions, and these are statements. When we ask them to agree or disagree with a statement? First one is, does the district spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? 78% said yes, 18% said no. That is 23 points higher than the norm of 55%. Are the schools a good value for the investment? Absolutely. Nine out of 10 are saying that it's a good value. Have you spent past referendum funds responsibly? 79% say yes, you have. Norm on that is 53%. Do you consider a tax increase only as a last resort after all other budget alternatives have been considered? 65% say yes. Norm on that is 50%. When we look at these three, the ones I've highlighted in the green color, we consider those to be financial markers. What's the credibility in the district on finances with residents? And yours is extraordinarily high. And we're going to see it when we come back to a cumulative rating on finances. How does the district do involving the community in decisions? 79 to 16, very strong. The norm on that is 75%. And it's a very tight window. Over the last five years, you know, most districts, this question brings in additional baggage it didn't use to because people have a hard time differentiating between having their say and having their way. So if you have the opportunity to be involved, but the board doesn't do what they want you to do, well, then they weren't involved. So that's why I say it's a very tight range of about 73 to 77% typically. Districts are at 79% is a very strong rating. And the first time we dip our toe in the referendum waters is a question that the schools are a good investment and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. Now, there's nothing in the question that states whether it's an operating levy or a bond referendum, if it's 50 cents a month or $50 a month. We're just looking to see where people are at the outset. You have 65% saying yes. The key though is what is the core opposition? What is the percent of people that won't support a property tax increase for any purpose? And it's 22%. Now, over the past three years, we've worked on over 100 successful referendums. The norm on the successful referendum at the outset is having core opposition at under 25% at the outset. Just in concept, they oppose. So it's a very manageable number at the outset. Job performance ratings? This is, we give them the scale of excellent, good, only fair, poor. And I just collapse this into favorable, unfavorable. The school board, 76 to 14. It's better than 5 to 1. The norm right now on that is about 1 and 1/2 to 1. 55, 40 is the norm. The superintendent administration, 73 to 14, better than 5 to 1 also. The norm on the superintendent right now is 2 to 1. So both of them compare very strongly. But also, it shows in the minds of the community that the governance side and the administration side are working well together. The ratings almost mirror each other. That's not the case. And I always can tell when there's some dysfunction in a district of the superintendents here and the boards up here or vice versa. This is almost a one-for-one. You either think the governance is doing good and the administration's doing well or not. Very strong ratings. Now, the closer you get to children, there tends to be more fondness. Your principals are very highly rated at 81 to 9. Teachers are a little bit below the norm. The norm on teachers is 85%. So within the margin of error, a little bit of an uptick in the unfavorable rating. But overall, very strong job performance ratings of the district. This is the highest rating we have over the last three years on the financial management of the school district. 74% rated excellent or good. 21% say only fair or poor. The norm on this right now is 51%. It's an outstanding rating coupled back with all those really specific questions we asked on finances earlier. The district has strong credibility. I call it the reservoir of goodwill and financial spending and decision-making. You also are in what we classify as a benign tax climate. When we ask folks, and now this isn't a test. This is tapping into perception. How do you think the property taxes of the district compare to neighboring school districts? So it's tapping into the grapevine and all of those things. The very high and high, 35% say their total taxes are high. On the school side, 34% say their school taxes are high. 57% say their total taxes are about average. 56% say their school taxes are about average. You actually had 7 and 6% say they're low. Nobody said very low, but they said somewhat low. The threshold we use on this one to look at how hostile a property tax climate is is when the very high and somewhat high reaches 50% in the district. You have more people saying my taxes are high at the outset. What's an extraordinarily hostile tax climate? We had one in the Twin Cities about a year ago that had 77%, very high and somewhat high. That's really a difficult environment to try to pass a tax increase regardless of what you're asking. The key on this is not that everybody thinks their taxes are great and are willing to increase them. The key is to understand how much resistance are you going to have just in the basic overcoming, how much this is going to cost? Are they going to go to, because on election day, you want folks to walk into the voting booth and make a simple cost-benefit analysis. How much does it cost? What am I getting? And not have any of the additional, I'm worried about my total taxes. I'm worried about the school board. I'm worried about all these other factors. This shows that they're willing to have a conversation because there's not the tax hostility that we see elsewhere. Now, at the same time, you have a perception that the schools are adequately funded. Okay? Now, this doesn't necessarily line up with facts either. It tends to line up with whatever happens in the legislature. And whoever does the victory laps and takes credit for the amount of money going to schools changes people's opinions on this. So 77% currently think that you're adequately funded. 19% say no. How would they rate the buildings and facilities that meet the needs of educating today's children? Now, keep in mind, you have 66% of this sample don't have children. This isn't a sample of parents. This is a sample of the community. 94% rate them excellent or say yes, they do meet the needs. Only 5% say no, they don't. Okay? So in an effort and a plan moving forward with buildings and facilities has to include engaging that vision of what it could be. And so, and then how do you move people? Not that they think that they don't do the job. They're not saying no. That's not their reality. How do you move the yes to strong yes? Okay? Linking it back specifically, when you go back to what they like most, it's about programs. It's about curriculum. If we look at evaluations, we lumped the elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools together. They're all positively seen by the, viewed in the community with ratings. 87% in elementary schools, 85% on the middle, 86% on high school, 92% on the athletic facilities. So this leads to the discussion. And you have the luxury of time to make the case if you do decide to go forward with what's going to be improved and how it's going to link back to those key values that people support. 21st century learning spaces, flexible learning spaces, whatever we're calling them today. We first ask, how important is the classroom design to student learning? The good news is your folks, you don't need to convince them. They see that link. 78% say it's either very or somewhat important, the actual classroom design to student learning. You don't have to sell. What you have to do, because when you ask them, does the district currently provide flexible learning spaces? 74% say yes, you do. And so that's, this is showing them what it could be. Because keep in mind, I'll go back to again, 2/3 of the people don't have kids. Probably half the people haven't been in a school classroom. They might have been in to vote at the school or go to a basketball game at the school. But to see a classroom, this oftentimes requires a very hands-on, high-touch approach to show people what a school classroom could look like. Tax predisposition. This question is if you heard the district is having, was going to ask for a property tax increase, would you be against any property tax increase? Would you be for any property tax increase? Or are you persuadable for some and against others? You're just like every other school district over the last five years across the Midwest. Half the people have made up their mind with no information because it's not telling them what it's for, how much it costs. You have 50% that are against anything or for anything regardless of what it is. When I started doing this in 1994, you had about 15% that made up their mind and 80 to 85% that said, well, I need more information. Now, we just have reflexive reactions. The good news at the outset in that 50% split is you actually have 1% more people in support of everything than against everything. Over the last three years, on the successful referendums we've worked on, the against-all was three points higher. It was, so it was a minus 3 at the outset. You're actually a plus 1. But obviously, the key is going to be the 50% and how they tip one way or the other. Let's make a deal question. Keep in mind, we have 24% saying I'm against anything. Now, when we ask for a specific dollar amount, it only jumps up two points in saying nothing. Now, that is in a very low number. The norm on this is between 30 and 35% at the outset of people willing to not specify a dollar amount. Where does it come in for a tax increase? Roughly about $4 a month at the outset. Now, I always tell school boards, that number's not set in stone. What matters most is what's included in the package. I've worked with districts where they've gone three times higher than the number, but every single component that they have in the package is supported by 75% and it's successful. I've also had districts that come in underneath the number and include, well, the favorite is typically a pool or an ice arena. And that tends to be a lightning rod issue typically. So it's just meant to show you at the outset where the tax tolerance is. When we break out the specific components that we tested and ask, would you support a property tax increase for this purpose? You have three tiers. Classroom additions at schools, experience enrollment growth, safety and security enhancements, both at 75%. I will make a comment based on the previous two things, items mentioned with research on safety and security. This is not an indictment of the current safety and security in the school district. What we have found, you know, and the safety and security issue, you know, when Columbine happened in the 90s, I don't mean, this is not to disregard it, but it was a blip in the minds of people, like it was a one-time happening. So the concern on safety and security lasted for about a year and then it faded. What has changed and has not dropped back down is since Newtown, Connecticut. And the question that we ask on some districts is, does the district do a good job of providing a safe and secure learning environment? And you'll have 95% of people say yes. You'll ask, will you support a property tax increase for safety and security enhancements? You'll have this number. It's not saying that you're not doing a good job. It really has gone to the point of you can never be too safe. Okay? Now, if we go down to the second tier, building improvements, and this was deferred maintenance, the types of issues, construction of a gym with shared space with a cafeteria, 62%. Expansion of common areas at 62%. And then two in the 50s, improved bus loading zones and upgrades to athletic facilities. The good news across the board is if the package includes all of these, it would be successful. You don't have anything what we call a deal killer, where you have 30% support and 70% opposition. Where if it's included just symbolically, it can take a package. These two at 75% and these at about 2/3, all are strong pillars of the potential package if you choose to move forward. Consolidating elementary schools. 53% support the consolidation of elementary schools. 37% oppose the consolidation. On these sorts of questions, we first off, look right away at the intensity because those are the folks you're going to hear from on both sides. Strong support at 12%, strong opposition at 19%. So the intensity, even though the community as a whole supports it in a majority fashion, 53%, on intensity, it's almost 2 to 1 for strong opposition to strong support. Now, the message we followed up with those that opposed, would they still oppose knowing the district could save operating funds and consolidating? And then only 39% of that group still oppose consolidating. What it means with this knowledge, 71% of the community is willing to have a conversation about consolidating elementary schools. Now, once again, this didn't give them specifics on which ones. That will come into play as that decision is made. But as, this shows us that the district's willing to have a conversation, especially if it's linked back to the ability to save operating funds. An overall evaluation of the options, 57% say it sounds like a good idea. 29% say a bad idea and 14% say they're unsure. So better than 2 to 1 saying it's a good idea. The bad idea strongly, those were the folks that were going back to the consolidation of the elementary schools. That core opposition of about 20%. The two high schools. First off, a quarter of the people aren't even where you have two high schools. This always does, everybody's going to scratch their heads. I learned this 25 years ago when I started this. You think everybody knows something? Boy, it's, yeah. On election day this year for president, there'll be 10% of people that have no idea there's a presidential election happening. Now, how that's possible, I don't know. Your universe is never 100% of the society we live in. So keeping in mind a discussion on planning, a quarter of the people don't, aren't where you have an east and a west high school. Now, great configuration change at the high school. And we talked about in the paragraph, and maybe I should read it for clarity so everybody knows what people were told. As you may know, the Wausau School District currently has two ninth to 12th grade traditional high schools. There have been some discussions about creating one high school with two campus configuration in which one would become a ninth and 10th grade high school and the other would become an 11th and 12th grade high school. That statement, 28% support, 46% oppose, and 27% want more information. They're not willing to give an evaluation. They're not willing to give an evaluation. On intensity, it's, it mirrors the overall support. It's two to one in opposition at the outset, okay? Then what we did, and we followed up and asked why they felt that way. The key reason for support is in, so the twenty-eight percent, the key reason is increased learning opportunities for students. And then the potential for better discipline and less bullying in that environment by separating nine, ten and eleven, twelve. The opposition side, the key reason is they see no reason. It's simply fine as is, there's no need to do this, okay? So there is a anti-change possibility. And keep in mind, once again, sixty-six percent don't have kids. So they're not aware of the problems potentially with the facility. So then we read some support statements. And we asked to tell us if it makes you more likely to support the great configuration change, to oppose it, or does it make no difference? Are you unsure? The three key messages that resonate with the community is the district would be able to balance class sizes more effectively by grade. The district would be able to expand educational programs and elective classes to better meet student interest. And high school students in Wausau School District would have that same, access to the same educational programs. So it's going to equity, it's tying it back to programs and curriculum and class sizes. Those three statements have almost sixty percent of the community saying, okay, I would consider supporting this great configuration change. The other two, and this just tends to be, and we see this in other, when we bring up the better use of staff time and better staff collaboration, it's all well and good, but it's insider baseball. It's what's happening with the kids is the most effective message when you're dealing with consolidation, boundary changes, all of those sorts of things. So keeping in mind that we've read five statements, all for a reason to consolidate. We come back and ask, okay, how do you feel about great configuration change at the high school? I'm going to flip back. We started out at twenty-eight percent support to forty-six percent opposition. We moved to twenty-seven percent support to forty-seven percent opposition. You have an uptick in the support levels because you picked up the uncertainty. The uncertainty moved, dropped eleven points and they basically all went into the support. Interestingly, the gap even widened though on strong support versus strong opposition. So this is, this is an issue that we would classify as not ripe in the community's mind at the outset. And then finally, communications. Where are folks getting their information? I love being back in my home state because this mirrors my hometown. The grapevine is alive and lush. And with word of mouth at twenty-one percent and teachers and staff, sometimes teachers and staff get mad at me when I say this, but it's an informal communication network. It's not a formal, you have three, a third of the community giving their information from a person, okay? The local newspaper at nineteen percent, the district website, e-newsletter, social media, email, local television. Now, how do they prefer to receive information? In this one, I typically just look at print versus electronic. Where is it, where is the, where's the school district at? So the mail newsletter at twenty-nine percent and the local newspaper at sixteen percent, you have about forty-five percent of people that want something in their hands. That's how they would prefer to be communicated with. You have then the website, the e-newsletter, email, you have forty-three percent. So you have that typical divide. There are very few districts that have a majority of people wanting everything electronically, okay? You have to do both of them and you have to do them well. When we look at specific sources, the impact of the grapevine becomes even more noticeable. Do you get a lot or some, very little or no information? What's arrayed is the lot and the sum. Discussions with neighbors and friends, seventy-five percent of the community is getting their information. The Wausau Daily Herald comes in second at sixty-two percent. District children, the website, e-newsletter, social media and district employees.
I'm wondering, we have an online newspaper, the Wausau Pilot and Review, and sorry, Wausau Daily Herald, but I'm thinking they probably get more, they get more used for source of information than the Daily Herald.
We did not test that.
Yeah, so you probably didn't know about it, but it's out there.
And then finally, I just put this up because my children think that everybody has access to the internet in the entire world. And I just, we asked the question, just to be aware, if you don't do print of some sort, you're losing a tenth of the population does not have access to the internet. And I will tell you also, that group is the most likely to vote because it's a very specific demographic. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question on the tax increase of four dollars. That question wasn't, wasn't about a mill rate or about as applied to certain property value. It's just how much would you support per month?
Right.
Just doesn't matter what your house is worth, doesn't?
People will put that in the calculation, but it's, we thought the let's make a deal questions on my phone, or would say if you, how much would you support a tax increase for facility needs in the district? Would you support eight dollars a month? And if you say yes, how about ten dollars a month? No, okay, the answer is eight. If you, if you say no to eight, they'll say six. And you go up and down to try to find the balance point. And the twenty-six percent just at the outset say no.
Bob, just real quickly, with an answer somewhere between four and six, what is that amount to, do you think?
Well, it all depends on what you compare it to. If you compare it to our mill rate right now, and I've shared this information with you before, you could probably pass a seventy-five million dollar bond referendum and have your mill rate stay the same. So it's relative. And people are going to ask, well, if a yes means this, what does a no mean? Well, a no means we're going to probably continue our strategy of taking callable debt and paying it forward or paying it in advance to save interest, which we've been doing. So that's a tough question. Before the survey hit the streets or the phones, we, we had this discussion. We thought Peter would be able to give more insight if he kept it the same as his questions have been. He's asked this question dozens of times, so we leaned towards this rather than a mill rate question or a going down versus staying the same question, which is really what's going on. What could happen in Wausau? Could be going down versus staying the same.
Yeah, I will say the whole with items dropping off and it going down, okay? People don't calculate that into their, this is what they paid this year. How much more are they willing to pay next year? One district we work with this past fall, because they had the debt coming off and then they were adding more debt, I keep this specific, it might have been twenty dollars a month was the net increase. But then the vote no group got involved and then they started to publish that, well, if you don't vote for this, we get a fifteen-dollar tax decrease. So it's actually the district's being disingenuous and it's actually a thirty-five dollar a month increase. The district passed at seventy, thirty. What matters, people, they don't make that calculation. It's a fixed cost.
In your analysis of this, now, the last time, maybe about, what, five years ago when we did our last referendum, we passed a thirty on building, thirty million, and if I remember those numbers correctly, but we didn't pass a five million on operations. Are you getting any sense from this about support for operations versus building referendum?
We did not get into specific questions on support for a property tax increase for operations, but I can tell you, I would not expect there to be a great amount simply based on the question of are your schools adequately funded? And seventy-seven percent saying yes, they are.
Yeah, I think we found that too when we went through that referendum. People were much more receptive to, here are the things that we haven't done to our buildings for the last twenty years. You know, here are the things we need to do to get caught back up as opposed to the day-to-day expenses.
Bond referendums are easier to pass because they're tangible. The difficulty is when people start nitpicking the specifics in that sense. And operating levy is in a sense ethereal to people. I mean, first off, once again, going back to seventy-seven percent being aware that you have two high schools. If you ask people, we used to ask in the nineties and it just became pointless. Basically, between fifteen and twenty percent of people even understand there's a difference between a bond and an operating levy. But an operating levy is harder to pass without very strong value adds on it or very negative logical consequences if it fails. To be able to go to the community and say, if the operating levy is not supported, we have to cut X, X, X. We have to increase class sizes.
Or close a school.
Without that, or close a school. So it really is, but, I always prefer bond referendums because you could put a nice picture out there of what it looks like. But operating levies in the current environment over the past ten to fifteen years in politics, you really, you have to show there's consequences, that there's going to be cuts. And it can't be cut to fat, it has to be cut to the muscle. And sometimes in some school districts, you need to cut to bone before residents will support an operating levy.
Other questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Your line.
Hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
So I believe we're on agenda item six, which is related to what we just digested. And this is developing the referendum proposals.
Yeah, and we didn't want to be presumptuous. I will tell you that, you know, based on the feedback that you just received, we had taken a look at it a little bit earlier. You know, couple that with conversations about how to improve student behavior and how to improve student and staff wellness, you know, all those conversations we've had around the whole child, whole Wausau plan. It's really prompted a conversation, a substantial conversation about the future of this district. And we feel that we are maybe in a position to really bolster our position with respect to supporting student achievement, supporting, you know, the community businesses, supporting staff, I think, and so really, we don't, you know, we are coming to you with a proposal tonight. What I wanted you to do is to have an opportunity to hear all of this. You're already aware of the strategic plan. We're not changing the strategic plan, we would be enhancing and supporting it. What we're asking tonight is would the board support our development of a referendum proposal? Doesn't mean we have to go. Simply means we think this might be a next logical step. And if the board would support that, we would work together, develop a comprehensive proposal, bring it back to maybe March-ish, February, probably more of a, of an outline, a timeline, you know, a framework, and then a more comprehensive plan in March.
Absolutely.
Yes. All right, so I think I'm seeking a motion to authorize the administration to develop a proposal for a potential referendum.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for all the work behind that information. This will serve as a basis for us to make our decision with this motion. Next, moving on to agenda item seven. And this is the five-year fiscal forecast. Back over to Bob. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Drive safely.
You see our five-year projection every year. Pretty sure it was in our old policy. I don't think it's in our new policy to show it every year, but I'm going to keep showing it because it's important to know where you're going, right? Not just next year, but the next five years. So we use a pretty sophisticated tool called FiveCast. And it's a product we've been using for a few years. And it literally takes thousands of assumptions and builds it into a projection model. And many of them you have seen already. And I've got them in Board Book again today to remind you of them and a couple of things that have actually changed. And then this sophisticated model spits out a lot of reports. And one report is how much revenue and how many expenses we'll have for next year, and the next, and the next, and the next. And the work that lies ahead for the next two or three months to balance the next year's budget, which you will see already in May. So in May, you'll see next year's budget already. So it didn't take much time off from when you saw the last one. These are all pretty small, but you do have them in Board Book. And I'll try to zoom in on some of the components that I think are more important than others. You'll see pairs of sheets that come together. One is historical and one's future, historical, future. This is history. And in Fund Ten, what has happened the last five years. This one's a projection, what the model projects for us to do in the next five years. And some of the important numbers I have circled. If we consider revenue and expenditures together, three-hundred-seven thousand dollars is a pretty important number. Three-hundred-eight thousand dollars approximately is the amount that we're going to have to balance between now and May. Combination of increased revenue, maybe some reduced expenses. The easy ones are change the assumptions. We don't want to just change assumptions just to change them and make it balance. We want to change the assumptions to things that are more accurate. Maybe something gets revealed out of Madison or maybe something happens in the Wausau School District to change assumptions. So the easy ones are change assumptions. Increased revenue is sometimes an easy one. Decreased expenditures are the painful ones. And we have to go through about three-hundred-eight thousand dollars of reductions. And Mr. McKee was here, he reminded us that's small percentage-wise, and it really is. We have a one-hundred-six million dollar budget, so cutting three-hundred-eight thousand dollars shouldn't be too much of a challenge. And we'd be foolish to think that there aren't enough low priorities. Priorities do change from year to year, every single year, every day probably priorities change. So we should be able to identify three-hundred-eight thousand dollars in lowest priorities that will fall off. The challenge comes in, we've got right now about one-point-three million dollars of budget requests that also have to fit in. And if you fit the one-point-three million dollars of budget requests, the three-hundred thousand becomes one-point-six million. So we're spending time right now, which of the one-point-three million dollars in requests are high priorities? And if they're all high priorities, where are the low priorities that are going to fall off? And we're going to bring you something, I think that might be in March also.
Could be.
Okay. A budget reconciliation plan that you've seen in the past. And this issue doesn't end here, it keeps on going. Is if we balance this budget, one-point-eight million shortfall the following year. If we balance that one, two million. If we balance that one, one-point-nine, two-point-three. That's a structural deficit. Our revenue is going up, our expenditures are going up a little bit higher, faster. So that's just a typical structural deficit. How do those things get fixed? Madison helps us a little bit. We help ourselves a little bit, we change our spending habits, we change some of the other things we do. Referendum perhaps, consolidating, saving operational money, those strategies, all kinds of strategies all combined to balance the budget. We don't worry about that second one a lot until this time next year, but we need to think about it. It's foolish to ignore what's going to happen in years two through five. Revenue analysis, general fund revenue analysis, you will see these go up and down a little bit. And I highlighted the equalization aid. And I say it often enough, that if you spend more, you get more, right? Equalization aid formula is set up, you spend more, you get more. And what have we been doing for three years now? Strategy called defeesence. And defeesence is prepaying quite a bit of debt. And by prepaying debt, prepaying debt. And by prepaying debt, prepaying debt, spending more gives us favorable aid payments. So our aid is up, our aid is up. Why does it go down 59, from 60 million down to 59 million? The model is built in such a way where we're discontinuing our defeasance strategy after next fall. Now, it's just the model. The model suggests end the defeasance strategy, not because we're going to end the defeasance strategy, but because that's the only way we can accurately layer on top of that a referendum strategy. Because remember what the defeasance strategy is for? To create an opportunity to perhaps, maybe, possibly go to referendum, right? So we took the defeasance out of the projection model in order to put an eventual referendum strategy in, so we can at least measure it. Is it going to cause taxes to go down a little bit, stay the same, cause taxes to go up? So that's what's happening on that slide. So our revenue does fluctuate. And that happens. When you stop spending money, your aid starts to dry out. Purchased services. This is a concern that I need to at least make you aware of. Purchased services include dollars that go out of our district to other districts for open enrollment. Open enrollment out tuition. We also have open enrollment in tuition coming in. If we just mathematically project based on what's happened the last four years, just extend this another four years, that gap gets wider and wider and wider. And this increase in purchased services, think about purchased services are the things that we buy, not the people we hire, not the benefits that we give them. The things that we buy. And in every case that we could do this, we hold that flat. You've seen our projections, our projection model assumptions before. All department budgets are zero. 0, 0, 0. Those are made up of mostly purchased services. So how could purchased services go from 1804 to 1809 to 1906 to $20.3 million? That's primarily because of open enrollment out payments that we're making to other districts. That is getting to the point where it's a crisis. It's probably a year or two away from, we can't support that. 20 million, 21, 23, 24. I don't think that trend can continue because there's only so far it can go. But that's just mathematically speaking, projecting that trend forward for five years. Something we worry about, we talk about. We have to have a strategy. Earlier tonight, we talked about it. That's part of the strategy for stemming that open enrollment out flow. I don't want to say there's nothing noteworthy on this one because there's no yellow, but there are a lot of slides and you can look at these. This is special education history of the increases. Yeah, transfer. Here's the projection going forward. And I did highlight the special education transfer. Remember those transfers, 10 million, 9 million, 10 million. We need to know that about $10 million goes from the general fund to Fund 27 to support all of special ed. Those are large numbers. $10 million is what we tell the lawmakers that we're underfunded in special ed, so we have to bring money from the general fund to support special ed. And we know that's changing. In fact, it changed this year from 26 to 30%. So that's why it has a little dip. And then we're also making the assumption that it's going to stay 30. We're hopeful. Governor Evers says over and over again it's going to go up to 50 or 60. Some really big numbers, but it's how much will the legislature as a whole support you? Special ed revenue analysis. Again, the bulk of the revenue coming from a transfer from Fund 10. So everywhere we get Fund 10 money is where Fund 27 gets their funding from. Special ed expenditures. That just splits up the expenditures. Debt service. This is Fund 38. This is non-referendum debt. And you'll recall, if you've been paying attention the last eight or nine years, we have three phases of energy efficiency work that we've completed. The first phase, we didn't borrow any money for. And the second phase, we borrowed about $10 million for. And the third phase, we borrowed another $10 million. So you'll see the Fund 38 debt payment was zero. Then it was 1.3 million. Then it went up to 1.8 for Phase 3. This was all planned. First year of the debt, it was a little bit lower. Now you'll see it's a little bit over $2 million. And that's where it's going to stay for the foreseeable future. That's Phase 2 and Phase 3 together, $20 million of debt that we're paying off. That's Fund 38 that you gave authority to the district to borrow, not the voters necessarily. That's Fund 39 where the voters give the authority. Fund 38 is inside the revenue limit. It's for energy efficiency projects. And also later on in the night, you're going to hear from Larry Seiler. And Larry Seiler is going to show his capital improvement budget again. It's going to be again, $1 million, $8,000, I believe, right? $1 million. This provides relief. Some of the energy efficiency projects that we've been able to do over the last four or five years provides the necessary relief. So Larry Seiler can continue to bring you a $1.008 million capital improvement budget over and over again. Their budget amount's just over $2 million, so that will stay the same. What we have a little bit more flexibility with. This, you'll notice, is Fund 39. This is referendum-approved debt. We borrowed money to build East High School. We borrowed money to build our 4K academies. We borrowed money to build on to our high schools for tech ed. This is where you pay it back. And the voters give you the authority to borrow the money. And we pay it back through Fund 39. This is historical. This is pretty typical. $5.7 million. 6.5 was a little bit higher, 6.5. This is when we started our defeasance strategy. This was the first debt payment for the 2015 referendum. Referendum, notice it went up. Defeasance strategy started, went from 6.5 to 9.9 million. It's additional debt that we're paying off. And we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest in doing that. We're prepaying debt, saving interest. Went up to 12.9, almost $13 million the next year. This past fall, it went up to 13.5 million. So if you think about a normal debt payment of about 6.5 million, we're doubling that by prepaying debt. And if you're paying attention to just part of it, you're saying, wow, taxes must be really spinning out of control in Wausau. Taxes stayed the same and the taxes went down the last two years. We intentionally kept our mill rate at $11 two years ago and then we let it drop to 10.79 this year. And we've got a similar strategy next fall. It's going to let it go down a little bit more by defeating the amount of debt that we choose to defees to make that happen. So we have some control over that. I mentioned this before. This is the current amount with defeasance, prepaying debt. This is next year's amount. It's nice and round because I just picked 13 million. Seemed like a pretty good number that was in the neighborhood. Look what happens the next year. You're going to see a picture of this in subsequent slides. It goes down, 13 million to 552,000. That's going to be our normal debt payment in Fund 39 after that strategy is complete next fall. Does that allow for a referendum? The affordability is there. We talk about successful referendum, the affordability matches the need. And we're still working on the need. And we've been working on the affordability for the last three years. So we're going to build some scenarios where we fill in at least a part of this for Scenario A, Scenario B, Scenario C. We've got that opportunity. Here are the pictures of the same. I am going to make this, I had a number in mind that was going to make this a perfect match. I thought it was about 69. We'll try 63. This was our debt structure before any defeasance. And we always talked about that opportunity in 2024, pass a referendum. And maybe if we miss that opportunity, another one in 2027. Then our mill rates started to go down. We started to talk about prepaying debt. This is three years worth of defeasance, including the one that you just did last fall to set the levy. But you're going to see the official action happen sometime in March or April. So it's going to be in front of you again. The three years that are kind of behind us. These are no longer debt payments. These previous debt payments were paid off here, here, and here. So now our debt structure looks like this, this, this. And again, it's not, your mill rate's not going up. It's just the debt payment portion of your mill rate's going up. And from here, it's expected to go down to here, and here, and here. If we do it one more year, next fall, goes down even further. Prepay more debt, prepay more debt, prepay more debt. So our debt structure's going to look like this. Go down to this, go down to this. Maybe you saw the half million dollars on the previous slide and wondering why this looks like about $2.5 million. This is Fund 38, 39 put together. So Fund 38 and 39, next year's debt payment is going to be about 2.5 million. Now with that, we're going to be able to build various affordability scenarios for potential, possible, perhaps referendum. Have to be careful not to be presumptuous. See there, the affordability's there. You can match this up with a gradual debt schedule.
So in other words, you've taken a look at the future. You've taken that down so that it gives us the opportunity in order to be planning for the future as well.
Absolutely. While keeping the mill rate stable or going down. And saving literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest payments that we're prepaying. And that 21 example, we have to do that next fall yet, right? And actually, the 20 example, we have to do yet this spring because we have to take official action on that. Defeesance resolution. You've seen it before. Seen it two times before. This is the third time. This is just repeating much of what you have already seen. Some of the assumptions that go into building the model and the ones that are in red are changed from the last time you saw them. And the first one is teacher salary assumption. And these were all 2.5's the last time you saw it. You'll remember from our teacher compensation plan, there aren't a lot of variables that are left anymore from our perspective. The variables that remain are teachers leveraging the old model, leveraging the new model, leveraging when they're going to move from the old to the new. Could it be cheaper if teachers chose a model that didn't financially benefit them? Could happen. Could it be cheaper if teachers didn't pursue Tier 4, for example? Could be. But the most recent data that I have, based on decisions teachers are making, is instead of 2.5, 2.94%. 2.94% is that assumption right now. And then it'll drop down after many of the people transition to the new model, 2.66, 2.72. And again, that's not really a decision that's up to us anymore. We made the decision to build the model the way we did and the transition plan the way we did. And now the decision is in the teacher's hands by which ones want to leverage the model in which way.
And I appreciate all the assistance that they received in making that decision about what was best for them. I know that you met with a lot of people and there were a lot of information sessions because of this change. And I think people really appreciated that.
Thank you. We're still meeting with them because the decision is yet a few weeks out. And I think we're at about 225 unique teachers that we've met with between different people on my floor. So all the other assumptions are the same as you saw them last, with the exception of a code change here. You don't have to worry about that too much. This is the concerning statistic I showed you before. Open enrollment out versus open enrollment in differential. The open enrollment out money versus the open enrollment in revenue goes up by 390, 385, 381, almost $400,000 each of the next four years. So those aren't the final numbers. Those are the increases. Up 300, up 385. That's built into the model. So some of the dire numbers you saw before in the projections of 300,000 this year within 1.8, 2.2 million, 1.9 million comes from that. That's a big factor.
Just to put something out there. When a district does some building and has a referendum and suddenly their facilities are better, could that have an impact on kids that decide to open or roll in or people that decide to stay?
Certainly could have an impact. We think back to our last referendum in 2015. Significant portion of that new building project was 4K. And you might remember who else started 4K right about that same time. So it was hard to really measure, right? I think we were going to lose some 4K students no matter what we did. But also some of our building was at the high schools with the tech ed. I think right around that time, it did flatten out. Here's another thing that changed is the revenue limit increased. The last time you saw this, I had 175. And then I had 4% in some other revenue that I think the governor was deciding where he wanted to put it. It showed up in the revenue, but it increased per student, 179. We're also making the assumption that it goes up to 200. Remember, this will be the last year of the annual budget. This will be a fresh annual budget, another fresh annual budget. And we're projecting $200. This is another one that we're hoping goes a little bit higher. Special ed reimbursement, 26, goes up to 30 next year. And then we've got it staying at 30. But that could provide some relief too. No actions needed. You've got a lot of data in front of you right now. You can go home and read more. That's the end of my prepared presentation. And I can answer any questions I have.
I'm not hearing any questions. So I believe we can go on to the next agenda item, which is still you, Bob. Legal expense summary for second quarter.
That is just a published statement telling you where we're at. I think we're a little bit higher at this point than we were last year. We're still with that budget.
Also not an action item, but were there any questions? Nope. Have any questions? Doesn't sound like any questions. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 9. Thank you, Bob, for all that information.
You're still here, Larry is.
Over to Larry.
$1.008 million, really?
That's fine, thank you. So Bob, I would think, would be very pleased tonight. Every presentation was all about math. Okay, good evening. So you have some information in Board Book that looks or should look very similar to this. And this should also look very familiar to you from other years in the past. This is obviously our capital plan for the 2020, 21 fiscal year. But we do a three-year capital plan because I believe it's a requirement, a fiscal requirement from the DPI. And the other reason we bring that to you this time of the year is so that we can prepare, gather bids, gather proposals for work that would obviously happen during the summer of 2020, which is when most of our large capital projects happen. And obviously, if we waited through the normal budget cycle, we wouldn't have sufficient time to do that. So the first thing that you see in here is the methodology. Methodology really hasn't changed from previous years. It's really just how we go about deciding what to do, when to do it, what our priorities are.
Want me to go all the way to the end, Larry?
Yeah. The next few pages, 5 through 27, not two pages, are really all the schools and some of the projects that we've done. And it's sort of a running tally, so we just keep track from year to year to year. Some of the more notable things that we've done in the past year, exterior door replacements. So a lot of our exterior doors are just rotting away, salt, sand, wear and tear. Replacing a lot of those roof replacements, although some of those were the tail end of the revenue limit exemption. Carpet replacements, again carpet obviously wears from use. South Mountain, the drainage, oh, drained this off. The playground area there was very wet. We made an attempt to dry that up, make it a little more usable. John Mear facade, again, that's revenue limit. But there was also some interior improvements to the classrooms, particularly science and art. Wausau East, the chill water loop, the loop that carries cold water to cool the building, failed earlier in the year, so that put a big kink in the plan. But we obviously accomplished- But we obviously accomplished that. Wausau West Track resurfaced. And then we re-terfed Town Field, not artificial turf, grass turf. Okay, because of previous winter and spring, it was very difficult. The final page is a synopsis. And again, you've probably seen this in the past. The current fiscal year, whoops. Fiscal year we're referring to right now. The original need, if you recall, that very, very big, long exhaustive spreadsheet that had all of the planned replacements and things that we wanted to repair or fix, is illustrated in the original need. You'll see HVAC upgrades, really big number. A lot of what drove that is a lack of air conditioning in a number of our schools. And you'll probably go back to the surveys, and you'll notice some air quality and hot concerns. And you could pretty much pick out the schools that don't have air conditioning with those. So obviously, a lot of that becomes something we take out of the plan. It's just unaffordable. And it leaves us with our final. And that final number, 1,840, I think, will be burned into my memory prior to my retirement. Okay? We're making some assumptions in the following years, although I think the approval tonight is simply for the upcoming fiscal year. So any questions on that?
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay, you should have a...
Well, yes, we do. And I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of the 2020-2021 capital project and corresponding budget.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
And with that, I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
Tell no.
Grab a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.